I now call to order this meeting of Nelson City Council, May the 7th, 2018.
You're correct. Dear Lord, thank you for this day. Lord, help us with our decision making here. Lead, guide, direct us. Be with all the servicemen, be with all the firefighters, police officers, EMT, everybody that keeps us safe. Be with everybody in the city. Be with their families, keep them safe. Thank you, Lord. Amen.
Mr. James?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all.
Y'all should have a copy of the agenda before you, if there's any changes, are there any changes to the agenda? Need somebody to accept the...
Did you pour our limit in the script? We need to look at it and get across it. I mean, we do. You want to have that in the script?
Yeah.
Discuss about at neighbor, the driveway is a poor lot.
Okay, do you want to make that 7B? Or wait a minute, can we put that as part of the 7B, discuss updates on the Cherokee Avenue? We can just add that one?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That's part of the, you don't have to amend the agenda?
Okay.
If it does any...
Yeah.
Okay, so we don't need to amend it. Can I get... I'll make a motion to approve it. All in favor? Now, let's approve the minutes for the April 2nd, 2018 council meeting. I'll make a motion to approve.
Just a minute.
All in favor? Do you second me?
I do.
The approval of the minutes for the April 19th, 2018 special call meeting. Make a motion to approve.
I'm set.
All in favor? Department reports. Can you turn it over to Ms. Monahan?
Okay. Financial report. There is a reconciled statement of revenues and expenditures ending March 31st, 2018, included with this report. Please review at your convenience. For anyone in the audience that's interested, there's copies out there in the clear bins that are hanging on the wall. Ms. Purnell and I have been working on the fiscal year 2019 budget and capital improvement budget, on which we will have a public hearing at the May 24th work session meeting. Maintenance. Flowers are blooming and the grass is growing. Mr. Fawcett and Mr. Long have been doing an excellent job keeping the city looking in tip-top shape. The dump truck is back from the shop and is now drivable. The parts and repairs came in at around $1,200, which is very reasonable considering everything that needed to be done. Mr. Queen helped me out a lot on this project by regularly checking up on the status of the repairs. He kept the repair shop in line for us.
Black truth.
Sanitation. Payments for the sanitation bill that was sent out in April have been coming in full force. We have also had some new accounts open since the last meeting. There is money left in the fiscal year budget for maintenance on the trash truck, and the Chattens have given me a list of things that need to be done. We should be dropping the truck off for these routine maintenance and repair items in the next week or so. Dumpster days were a huge success. 12.33 tons of trash left the city. I will go into more detail on this subject later on in the agenda. Information on the May 24th work session meeting. We will have the public hearing for the fiscal year budget and capital improvement budget. Cherokee County Fire Chief Tim Prather will be going over the annual report. Some other items are to discuss the second phase of the storm water improvement project and the possibility of starting some other projects around the city. As always, if there's anything that the council would like to see addressed, please let me know so I can add it to the agenda. Project updates. Updates on the road repair issue on Barrel Way in Winchester Oaks. The repairs on Barrel Way are complete. The repair on the pipes was complete as of the last meeting, but we were waiting on road repairs, which have since then been completed. Miscellaneous. I will be away at training the beginning of next week, however, Ms. Purnell will be here Monday and half a day on Tuesday, so City Hall will remain open and operational for the most part. This will get me two more classes closer to being a Georgia certified clerk. For those who are not already aware, the city is in the process of purchasing the property at 24 Spring Street. This is an area of focus for the next phase of the storm water improvement project, and owning it saves the city a lot of legal fees just to be able to access what needs to in order to complete all of the repairs. This property also backs to property that's already owned by the city. Its long-term future use is yet to be determined, but closing is scheduled for May 17th. Some exciting things are in the works for the city of Nelson. The Easter egg hunt was a huge success, and the Lodge has come to us wanting to put on some movie nights here in town. Mr. Chad Green has been heading up this project and working with the Lodge, so I will turn it over to him for some updates on the events.
I've been talking with Bo Walter over in the Lodge, and he's trying to get it set up where we can do it before it gets real hot and see what kind of turnout we get. Ball Ground, we're going to try to see if Ball Ground will let us use their projector, see what kind of crowd we can draw. But we're going to, if it draws a good crowd, the Lodge is going to try to raise some money to buy a screen for us to have it a few times a year, and maybe even have some band nights like they have in Ball Ground, too. Try to draw some crowd and get some people involved in the city and get to know some people around instead of just not knowing your neighbor. But Raisel, right now, I'm waiting on him to give me more about whether we can borrow it or not, or we have to schedule a band or something, try to see how we go with it from there.
Is the projector something that we could purchase under parts and racks?
I would think so, if it were used for that kind of purpose, public displays.
I could check with the auditor and make sure.
Okay.
Did you want to check with purchasing a projector as well as a screen?
He's, Bo's got some that he found, was 158 screens. He said some of them are screens, some of them blow up, they're about $1,000. He said he was, he said if there's enough crowd, that the Lodge would raise money to buy it. Either way or split it was, whatever we wanted to do, if we could, you know.
China, thank you. Officer Simmons, do you want to give us a recall?
We had another five month in Nelson. Total seven calls, I've got them broken down in front of you there. Two suspicious persons, one theft, which was actually an entering auto. A firearm was stolen from 16 Old Nelson Road. We had unknown trouble, which ended up being a sick call. One child custody, where basically, you know, we're just there to keep the peace off, block the kids. Funeral escort, and then the assist agency, what I'll get into in a minute. We had no significant or special incidents that happened in the city. Did want to mention that, you know, on April 6th, the city actually officially transferred the police vehicles to the sheriff's office, and just want to thank everybody for that. And as a way of an update, to update this, because it's changed since I sent this in, the charger is already in the fleet now, and the reserve unit's using it. They've already logged four days into it. They kept the video system that was in it, we're just going to use it. They're figuring out a way they're going to archive the discs instead of using it with the system we've got, but the reserve, normally when we have one of the reserves come help us, they have to grab a spare car from whatever precinct they can find. Well, now they've got one that's designated for them, so that's great. And Crown Victoria is already in service, too, with the double detention center, so we thank you, thank you, thank you, once again. I was contacted by Ms. Monahan to come, they were worried, they were doing a survey of property lines, and they were worried there might be a dispute, so I just came out to make sure there wasn't any. Wasn't. We had a, we, basically, it's the triplets down here, and just went and talked to them and said, hey, we got to put a spike in the ground over here and move this thing, and they're like, okay, it's real heavy, you ain't going to be able to pick it up. I said, oh no, we got this machine here to pick it up. So they were fascinated by the machine picking it up, and came off without a hitch, so it was a good day for us. Any questions?
All right, don't go anywhere.
Don't go anywhere.
Okay, you can come on.
Not going anywhere.
Okay. So this is a copy of the letter that wanted to give you a signed copy. And the city also wanted to present you with this certificate of appreciation for everything that you've done for the city, and we've all signed it, so...
Thank you so much, that's nice.
Something to hang on your walls.
And I'm hanging on the wall. Okay. All right. Excellent. Thank you so much, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Awesome. You're special.
I was going to get you a tiara, but I didn't know what side you're leaning.
Thank you.
Until we've got unfinished business. Discuss and update with necessary vote on the liquidation of any remaining equipment.
Okay. Just to keep everyone in the loop, I figured we would discuss updates on the liquidation of the police department. As was stated in Lieutenant Simmons' report, the cars were presented to Cherokee County Sheriff Frank Reynolds on April 6th and picked up by the county on April 11th. A work detail from the county picked up the remaining items that belonged to the vehicles on April 19th. The tags have been turned in, and the vehicles have been removed from the city's insurance policy. Included with the summary is a letter from Lieutenant Simmons in regards to the police property inventory for your information and reference. In terms of remaining equipment, there is not a lot to speak of. We have some outdated car camera systems, some other odds and ends, and then three firearms, two of which are older Glock Model 22 pistols, and a third of which is a Springfield M1A rifle. We were unable to determine exactly how the Glocks were purchased, probably because it was during the fiscal year 2015, which was the year with the bad audit. It was, found that the rifle was purchased on April 10th, 2012, from Adventure Outdoors with Cherokee County's Splus 2 Public Safety Equipment Funds in the amount of $1,499.99. Sorry, that was a long sentence. The paperwork in regards to the purchase of the rifle is in your packet, including the minutes when the purchase was voted on by the council at the time. It appears that the rifle has never even been fired due to the fact that all of the original factory lubrication and grease is still all over the bolt. In order to make sure that we are compliant audit-wise and to avoid any findings, I contacted Tacey Joe, who recommends that the proceeds received from the sale of the rifle be paid back to the appropriate Splus account from which it was purchased. As to the actual sale of the firearms, I will let the city attorney speak on the subject since he has researched the matter.
I looked at what a firearm can be different than any other city property that is being surplus or sold. There's nothing that is special in terms of firearms that the city uses for law enforcement as different as to seize firearms. So as to any individual item which the city needs to dispose of, that it has a value less than $500, and the city can dispose of it as it wishes without any kind of auction process or public bidding or anything like that.
Could we not get firearm dealers to come in here and bid on the guns, the three? The rifle should be worth $800 to $1,000, I would think.
You can do it, you can do anything you want to. If something is believed to have a value of less than $500, you don't have to do that process, you can always do it if you want to.
So for example, if you've got somebody that's wanting to give you $1,200 for straw three, and you know the Glock's probably worth about $200, you're still getting, you're going to get a $1,000 share.
But I'd rather use somebody registered gun dealers to come in and buy them, not just individuals coming in.
We had an offer from a registered gun dealer.
Yeah, I would be conscious, when I say that you can dispose of them, I think you would be obviously smart to, if you've got that as an option, I wouldn't be selling them to individuals, of course.
At least five or six around Pickens and Cherokee County would contact them, come and beat on them, I heard it gives them off, gives them... At least three or four in Pickens, and several in Cherokee could come and beat on them.
Can I interject one minor detail?
Yeah.
If the magazines that go to the Glock are marked law enforcement only, you can't dispose of them to, not law enforcement.
I'll look at those.
But as long as they're not marked, because most of the early ones were marked law enforcement only for the high capacity, so as long as they're not marked, then they're good to go with the pistols.
How many, how many, how many dealers you want to contact? Three, four?
Just, just whatever again, the more we get, the more money we might get. I would, let's see. This new place over here in the Ford Lane hates a gun dealer, and it's, yeah, it's bargain barn, it is, it makes some boss. Just several in Pickens, down in Cherokee.
I think it's better to sell it to a dealer.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, there is one more that offered them that it might be safer to do, we have several coming in and...
Let's get, let's get three and see if they're, let's get, let's get three, I'll call to get three, and then we'll see if they're in line. If they're not in line and they're all over the place, then we'll get two more.
Yeah, really, they like to be at top, where it'd be firing.
Yeah.
I mean, I'll just come in and say, I'll give you X amount of dollars for it.
There's one vote we need to vote on for that.
Do we need to vote on that or anything, or just one stuff?
About on contacting some people, seeing how it goes.
Okay.
I make a motion to contact several dealers, and see how it can be done now.
What's that? All in favor? The next is to discuss updates on the Cherokee Avenue Storm Water Drainage Project.
This has been an exciting couple of weeks here in the city. A project that had been in the works for over two years has come to fruition and better than we could have hoped. There was a pre-construction meeting on April 13th. Preliminary locating was done the next week, and hydrovacuums to further locate utilities was done on April 18th. Actual work was set to begin on April 30th, however, the project was underway ahead of schedule. The water company moved their lines, and as soon as this was done, Contracting Solutions began their part of the drainage project. Before work began, I went door-to-door and hand-delivered an informational letter to the residents on Cherokee Avenue. I answered any questions that the residents had and received a lot of thanks for the work finally getting done. As of today, the project is almost complete with the exception of some concrete aprons and final touches. The proposed project completion time was four weeks, and we came in way under that timeline. It is great to see the city starting projects that were long overdue. We will start on the second phase of the drainage project as soon as we determine what needs to be done and the best course of action to take. There are a few ways that we can do this next phase, but it's going to depend on what we intend to do with the property in the future. We will be discussing this at the work session, which will take place on May 24th at 7:00 PM. I want to give a huge thank you to Mr. James Queen, who worked like a rock star on the drainage project. He was there several times a day, every day, making sure that everything was being done to the city's satisfaction and answering any questions that the contractors may have had. He takes his role as an elected official seriously and has gone above and beyond making sure this project went off without a hitch. And then you want to discuss... So there were set initially for two concrete aprons, however, when James and Ricky, the engineer and the contractors, walked the street, they had found that several people had paved their driveways since the initial planning had been done. So they wanted to go ahead and at least do the ones that were paved, because they had to, I believe, tear that up, right? Yeah, they had to tear their aprons up. So that's kind of, the decision now is, there was one for sure added, there was another one that we needed to add, so we're at the point now where we're pretty much doing most of the aprons as it is, there's just a few people on that side that don't, and how they would like to see theirs done as well. In the bid packet, we did get the pricing on that, and it wasn't significant. That was one of the questions, where they quoted the price to do those aprons in case we needed to add extras, so we could figure it in, so that's, you know, up for discussion or decision whether we just want to add the aprons all the way down the road.
You know how many more to debate than what we already got figured in?
Please hold.
Hold a minute. We're talking seven. What do you see, I want number to the, I mean, to the...
Yeah, we're just going to go to the right foot. Right foot. If they're to the right foot.
The benefit to this as well is that it also protects the work that we've done. You know, we know that the company that we hired is, you know, has that pipe taken care of, they're the ones putting the concrete in, they know exactly how it has to be done so that we don't have to have a concern if a resident tries to do it or something, then there's damage to the work that we just did, you know, on the repairs. It's another benefit to that as well.
I think it'll look better if it's all done, I'm saying personally.
Yeah, I make an option with the red, blue, one on each, pitch for opportunity.
All set, yeah. All in favor? Discuss updates on Pickens County Comprehensive Plan and Service Delivery Strategy.
A year of work, I'm sorry, just give me one second. A year of work and a lot of meetings has finally come to fruition and has led to the production of 159-page document detailing planning information about Pickens County and its cities. The initial public hearing for the comprehensive plan occurred this time last year, and there were many after that, which allowed for residents to offer what they like and do not like, as well as their input and what they would like to see in the future. The county and each city had to create a community work plan detailing projects for the next five years, as well as maps. A lot of hard work went into this document, which has now been sent off to the state for their 30-day review process. Once this is complete, they will send it back with corrections and edits, and once these are finalized, the council will vote to make the plan official. There is a hard copy here at City Hall for anyone interested. I have it up here, I'll have it up on the front counter. I can send an electronic copy to anyone for their review, and in the interest of saving trees, I did not print a copy out for each council member, but if you're interested, I'll be glad to do so.
Leave one in the council, or if you don't...
Okay, I'll make another binder like that. The Service Delivery Strategy is something that is done alongside the Comprehensive Plan on an every 10-year basis. The purpose of this document is to create a list of services that both the county and the city provide to their residents. We voted to send the draft of this to the state at the last meeting for the 30-day review. This, too, will need to be voted on once the corrections and edits have been made. It is important to note that these documents are required by the state and need to be completed in order for the city to receive both federal and state funding. It is also worth noting that these documents can easily be amended if need be, and the Northwest Georgia Regional Commission is ready and willing to help us if this becomes the case. The final due date for submission is June 30th, 2018, and we are on track to meet this without any need for an extension.
Was that Eve Stevens that helped with that?
Yes, Eve, go ahead.
He has some, you can have some really good ideas, I think we talked about it before with regards to our, our plan, he was the one that was actually looking at a grant for senior building, which we decided we didn't want to do with communities there, and so it's very helpful and stuff.
But they're a great resource, the Regional Commission, that we can use anytime, this is just one of the many things that they help out with, so...
He did a good job, he came in, he spent a lot of time, a lot of things with us.
Do we have anything else on that? New business. Discuss and vote on the volunteer fire station lease agreement with Cherokee County.
Did you want me to present it to start, or did you want to do the honors?
I'm here for questions, if there's any questions.
Okay, well, I'll read and then with you a question. Back when the city first entered into the fire services agreement with Cherokee County, there was a part of it which served as a lease for the county to utilize our fire department building located at Dogwood Pass. While this was overlooked for some time, we are working to get everything in order, and for this to happen, myself and Cherokee County Fire Chief Tim Prather have been working together to get everything in line. The lease works in one-year increments, and as long as the agreement is not terminated, there will be an automatic renewal of one-year terms for five years total. The lease states that the county will pay the city $1 a year to lease the building. The county is responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of the premises, including any necessary repairs. The county shall at its own expense maintain the existing premises in good and safe condition, including electrical wiring, plumbing, lighting, structural repairs, maintenance of the grounds, and any other system or equipment upon the premises. The county will maintain and be responsible for all monthly utilities as well. The city will continue to insure the building, as it does in fact belong to the city and will continue to do so. This is just a lease, the same as if someone were to purchase a house to rent it out. The Cherokee County Board of Commissioners voted on and approved this agreement on April 17th, 2018. It is left up to the city to vote and improve this contract so that it can therefore be put into effect. I gave y'all a copy of the contract following that, and Fire Chief Tim Prather is here to answer any of your questions.
Do we hit to water and power and everything switched over?
Mm-hmm. No questions?
I don't mind.
I can provide just a brief summary over, I guess we're supposed to be here. You know, years ago, back in, when we, the county went county-wide on the tax, fire tax, I was still in the agent, so I was not here when all this took place, but we went county-wide on the tax, fire tax, and there was an agreement in place that was put in place then between the county and the city, you know, to take over, because they were operating out of this station initially. And then the fire, the records are not real clear, but not long after that tax ended effect, there was a request from the city to cease this being a fire station, and the city wanted to use it as a maintenance building. So the fire services agreement was modified to provide the fire service from the city of Ball Ground's fire station. So that went on for a few years, and again, the records ain't real clear, but somehow the volunteers wound back up in the station up here, and we couldn't find any kind of agreement. So, on how that took place. So, last year, we moved all the volunteer fire services under the Cherokee County Fire and Emergency Services name, so, you know, the old Hickory Flat Fire Department Incorporated, et cetera, all those are basically dissolved now, it's all Cherokee County. So as we was going through all these records last year, when I got to this one, I'm like, wow. I started tracking where the water's coming from, where the gas is coming from, and it looked like the whole time that's been a fire station, that somebody moved back into it, all the utilities was coming off that maintenance building, and nobody knew that. So that's what we've been working on, been working with, you know, over the last few months to try to get all that straightened out, and then as soon as we get through this agreement, all the utilities is going to come over to Cherokee, instead of the city right now, right? So as soon as this agreement is done, we move all the bills for the water, gas...
And electric.
Electric, all that over into the county. But it was to clean that up and to officially put us in that building, because there's never any official agreement, there has to be a fire station right now.
How long have you been in that building?
Jay, but me and y'all, when we done that...
So I could not track when the volunteers actually moved, we need that here, don't get me wrong, but we, there's just no documentation we could uncover that when, when the city and the county agreed to put, supply it from Ballground, how we got back in the station. Because y'all had it for a maintenance building, and then you built a new building, and then somehow or another come back in, but Keith, I need the records for that at all, how that took place. This is to get everything official for us to be in that building and to take care of it while we're in that.
How long have you been in that building this time?
Almost. Was it 2003 we did that?
I think it was 2002.
Well, it's long there. It was summers long there. And you know, we, we agreed, you know, to go up on the Pickens County side, do the high mills on the taxes.
Yeah, but you're right, you're right to tell, uh, the utilities are coming out of the maintenance building.
Yeah.
All of that.
We've got all that changed, well, working with Tina. All that's been, it's all going to be to that building now, meter, quarter meter's been set, and all that's right there.
How often are they ever there? We live like two doors up, so I see them out there a good bit, but I don't know.
This was totally volunteer, there's not, you know, staff here from that station, but what was the question?
I just didn't know how often they were there, because we see them sometimes.
I think unique once a week, once a week, I think on Monday nights, you know?
I think it's Wednesdays, but I'm not sure.
Wednesday, I think it's once a week out there, volunteers do.
They're nice guys.
There's a good group out here, yes, good group, a group of volunteers.
I'm glad for you.
Proud to have them there, we need that station here.
But you definitely don't have a man, oh, there.
No, sir, no, it's not staffed.
So do we need to make a motion to approve? I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll bear it.
All the...
Thank y'all, it's official.
We want you to stay here.
It's official. We do need the station here Nelson, so I made that clear with people in my box.
Next is to discuss and vote on advertising for bids on sidearm mower.
At the last meeting, mention was made about getting rid of the sidearm mower in order to make more room in the maintenance building, as well as to alleviate the city of owning a piece of equipment which is more dangerous than beneficial. The city purchased a sidearm mower on November 16th, 1999 for $52,650 out of the general fund. This amount includes the tractor, the motor attachment, as well as the custom safety cage. Some years back, a previous maintenance employee caused damage to a home on Ray Mountain Road while using this machine that resulted in a hefty insurance payout. It is dangerous to operate, and in our city, with the houses so close together, there are very few places that it can be safely used. Now that the other tractor is operational, there's really no need for this piece of equipment, and it would be wise to advertise it for bid so that we can put the money towards other equipment needed by the maintenance department. It is my intention to get an idea of its work by having someone from Nelson Tractor Supply, who we regularly purchase equipment from, come out and take a look at it. I can also get a quote from some other companies if the council wishes. So I'm asking the council to discuss and if want vote to advertise bids for the sidearm mower.
We definitely need a starting place for what it's worth.
We talked about this, I know last year at one point, because they haven't had a special license to even operate it or something.
It's just, it's crazy, it's very dangerous, and the safety cage is, is supposed to be protective, but if it flings a rock up, it goes right through the safety cage, it's a viewpoint.
Yeah.
Cost to be leased $10,000 to fix a house on Ray Mountain Road.
I want to drive up my house a little time.
It's not worth a lot of building.
I know, it's not.
Get some prices from some people and say, yeah, we need to beat it out to big companies or something, advertise it.
Yeah, we can advertise it to bid, and then, you know, like, we can set, like, having an idea from these separate companies going into it when we open the bids, for example, will know this is, you know, an average about what it's worth, so we can make an educated decision on it.
I'm going to contact David, I think we're still him, we sure do, the city never did pay him. And see if he'd be interested. I mean, that tractor. I know he gave $1,500 for the tractor, he got the part off, but... We need to reimburse him. I know. But you can't feed him, I'm running two days over there trying to get a bill, but you know how he is.
He can go after his wife.
Yeah.
I like his wife, I love her.
Couldn't do that.
Who wants to take that as an action? Who wants to take that as an action, to give it that?
I think all of them, what, I mean, what are you wanting to ask him, just?
Say what we owe him, I mean, tell him we're going to sell it, we need to sell it like we am, we're asking if he'd be interested, but I, I mean, the tractor's in good shape. Yeah, the tractor's in good shape.
Anybody know what brand it is?
Cabana.
Oh, Cabana.
It's a nice tractor.
Little wheel drive.
Yeah.
Mine will be better over here.
You do, right? I've never seen it, I was just curious what it, what it looked like.
Isn't there a devoted dealership right, right there on the side?
No, it's a driver's partner.
And then getting a house up in Jasper, and Masons. Masons, and Blue Ridge, and any of them.
That's where we actually purchased it from, I think.
Yeah, Masons. Yeah, contact them and see if that's in my name or... But we didn't, they didn't pay it back.
That's right.
Do you want to vote on, on that getting prices?
Yeah, make a motion.
Make a motion to get prices and, and stuff.
Yeah, do some more research.
Okay, one second, one favor. Um, next up is vote on making citywide dumpster days a quarterly event.
For about two years now, the city has been hosting dumpster days in order to help alleviate the overflow of trash and unwanted items around the city. As time has progressed, we have been adding them more regularly, and each time, the turnout is better and the amount of trash that leaves the city larger. As I stated in my report earlier in the meeting, we managed to remove 12.33 tons of trash from the city during the April event. I was thinking that since we have the money and the event is so well-received, that we could go ahead and do it quarterly. I can send notification out with the sanitation bills, since they also go out quarterly. What this would mean is that we would have dumpster days in January, April, July, and October. This would allow for residents to keep up on getting rid of unwanted items, which results in a cleaner city and a better place for us all to live. In other words, it's a win-win for everyone. I'm asking the council to vote to make citywide dumpster days a quarterly event.
I make a motion we do it, just like you done the last time, take all the paperwork and proof of title.
One second. One favor.
I don't want things we need to win out there, but it's a lot we do.
Yeah, they were, they were impressed with Ricky, because he went in there and smashed up down and got everything so that it was right at the level that they needed, but they said there was not a square inch of space left in any of those dumpsters that were...
Were you able to find that, either of, put the mattresses over there?
Of people in the wee hours of the evening of the night.
I'll have cameras or something facing it that way than we have in there.
Our camera, I won't get that dumpster in.
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah. People, um, that were throwing the, the no, and, and what I, another thing I want to do for the next time that we do it, is I want to get one of those big banners made that we can put up there that list, you know, the hours and what is not allowed in there, something that we can reuse, obviously, so I'm not going to make it date-specific. Sometimes they leave places where you can, like, write the date on there, um, I'm looking into, it doesn't cost that much money to get something like that done, um, because apparently the no mattresses on the sheet, the information sheet that I sent out wasn't clear enough, but I think that, I, I think it's safe to say that the people who dumped the mattresses knew that they weren't supposed to, because they were all dumped in the middle of the night. So...
Good science for that, good science for the city council, I mean, so, just do it.
Yeah.
Did they go around the barricade or?
Yes. Yeah.
Um, public appearance, is that...
No, wait a minute, we have eight D.
Yes, we do, apologies. Um, discuss and vote on the purchase of tools and equipment for the maintenance department.
When speaking with Mr. Fawcett about some items that are needed in the maintenance department, he took some time to research the matter and came back to me with a list. Some of the items include, and some of these were on, um, a prior list, but when we went back and looked at it, he thought maybe we didn't need these, but now he's thinking the better of it, the welder is an example of that. So a welder, a torch for the welder, a roll-around toolbox, uh, the 12-ton shop press, 22-ton either air or hydraulic floor jack, a four-ton porta powder, porta power kit, drill press, electric chainsaw sharpener, mechanic roller set, parts washer, a creeper, and a bolt bin. I, I don't know what some of those things are, but I'm assuming y'all are, you know, are familiar with some of those things. These are items that we either don't have at all, or we have, but they are working and in need of retirement. In order to keep the city in good running order, it is important to invest in the necessary items for this to be possible. There is money left in this fiscal year budget for the purchase of these items. We have found these items to be very reasonably priced at Harbor Freight, which can be ordered online or purchased at the store which is located off of Exit 16, where the old Kmart used to be. I'm in the process of seeing if we can set up an account with the company to make purchasing easier, although I have not finalized anything in regards to this yet. We could also get these items at Home Depot, but the cost was a lot more on many of the items. On some of the items, it was double or triple what it was with, with through Harbor Freight.
Harbor Freight, though, it's the, it's the quality of the tool.
The rest of the family, but not, but most of the power will be out there.
No.
It's great for occasional use here and there, they're fine, but if it's something that Ricky's using, especially for the city personally, I would spend the money and get a quality product and then use them for like, for, I mean, like a creeper or bolt bin or your basics that should be fine, but as far as like your big tools go, your welder, torch.
Welders and jacks. My welder I bought 15 years ago for $2,800.
Yeah, Mark's got one of the houses, it's a nice one. Yeah, one of the ones there, they'll be good for a little while, but, you know, and then they sell warranties on them, but half the time you get them on, they don't work to begin with, and then you go to take it back, and then you have to buy a new warranty for the thing you just bought, I mean, it's, they get their money away or another.
Well, I didn't know, I mean, Ricky said that he had been using Harbor Freight for his stuff at home, and he's had, he's had good luck with those, but I mean, if that's the case, and everybody said that, I mean, it's better to spend a little bit more than to get a quality item that's going to last and to get something that'll work in a short period of time.
Especially using it every day.
So do we need to just get prices on us, or go ahead and, like, go let him do it?
I go ahead and get prices on them.
Yeah, let's get prices on there, because some of those...
Next are in Jasper, there's welders and torches.
Yeah, there's one.
Oxen and settling.
Mark up, there's one in Hollis Springs.
Yeah, I see.
I don't remember the name of it, yeah, but they're nice guys, but I know there's another one or something for you.
Jenny, if you got that list, is that something you can take a look at, especially that welder?
Yeah. What do you think, whether I guess I need to the law morgue or? Yeah, probably. Well, see now, I can weld up to a morning, it's mental over there.
He needs one down there, because I know Mark would fix a bunch of that stuff when Jerry goes down there, that he needs one, he can just, as needed.
Let's try to get props then, um, before our May work session.
I like that real press and stuff like that, Harbor Freight might work. Yeah, but God, that's not constantly in use. But the welder I'd buy a good one. Yeah. And the tape box, yeah.
You can get a decent toolbox at Home Depot, I mean, giving up a tow truck or something like that, it's crazy.
Occasionally, they got a wholesale at our district, and you bought a big one.
Big Dason, I've had one before. It's better than not having, not having one.
Yeah. So we'll get like four, $5,000 for the ones that come off the truck.
Seventy-five dollars now, if we can just say... No, we'll just discuss, I'll bring back pricing up. James, if you can, keep the credit on that, try to kind of figure out, if you want to, when you get back from the trip over there. Okay.
Over 10 years ago.
All right, we have public appearance next, a short reminder, rules and regulations of the county if anybody has, has any public comments. I need a motion for going into executive session.
Motion to go into executive session.
I'll say it.
One favor.